Call to order, a city council meeting for tonight, June the 26th. I have a roll call. Ms. Maria?
Mayor Quilia McCaw.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Humphrey.
Present.
Councilmember Faye Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Angelica Landry.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Rodriguez.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll have our invocation by Councilman Rodriguez, and after our invocation, we have a pledge allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Humphrey. Please stand.
Please pray in your manner as I pray in mine. Lord, we thank you for letting us all make it here safely today. We pray for those who are currently ill or unable to leave their houses or hospital rooms. May they get healthy soon. Help us to make the best decisions possible for our city and to use our local resources in the best way possible as well. Lord, as we move closer to the Fourth of July holiday, we ask that you keep everyone safe as they travel to and from their destinations, and we also ask that you watch over all of our local events that we'll be having here in our community. Finally, we thank you for the monsoon rains that are predicted for next week. Although the storms are beautiful and much needed, they can be very deadly as well, so please keep everyone safe. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have item number one, acceptance of agenda Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that agenda for the regular city council meeting of June 26, 2025 be approved.
Been properly moved in a second. Have the discussion items. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, sitting on is passed. Tonight, we have a couple of awards. Our first award is presentation by the Avengers Little League team of certificates and appreciation by Ms. Michelle Henrietta.
I had something really quick to say, but I haven't. You don't usually do well with these things. So, and so I say good afternoon. Thank you for all for allowing us to be here today. My name's Michelle Henrietta. I am the founder and executive director of the Avengers Inclusion Organization. Our mission is to create, promote, and support opportunities for inclusion for individuals with disabilities and their families throughout our community. At the heart of our work is a simple but powerful idea that education and interaction can break down barriers and build understanding as well as lasting connections. One of the ways we do this is through our annual first responders baseball teams. A joyful event where our athletes, their families, and our local first responders come together for fun, teamwork.
Thank you. And community building. This year, we were thrilled to host our ninth annual, and it was our biggest turnout yet, filled with laughter, cheers, and the kind of spirit that reminds us of why inclusion matters. We would like to extend our deepest thanks to the Sierra Vista Fire Department, the Frye Fire Department, Sierra Vista Police Department, Cochise County Sheriff's Department, and members of the U.S. Border Patrol from the Tucson Sector for their active participation. I also want to give special thanks as well to Mayor McCaw for the season, for coming out and supporting us, and then Council Mark Rodriguez for umpiring our first responders game on the littles game side, but also for joining us at all our games this year and supporting our mission. Together, you help us make inclusion a reality, not just a word, but a lived experience. Thank you for standing with us. Things to hand out to say thank you. So, we were going to have our Avengers come up. And of course, Berlinda and Jolene are a huge part. They help coach, and I wouldn't be able to do this without them as well. All right, so. All right, so Ms. Berlinda and Jolene have the fantastic. So, the first one is for Mayor McCaw. We also have, because he, we, I know you were out of town on vacation. We do have a special sweatshirt for you as well because you've come to our games. So, thank you very much. This one is for Councilman, Ms., oh, Mark Rodriguez. Next, we have something special for Chief Heiser. The next one is for Brian Jones, and we're also giving one to, so Mr., Chief Foster, right? Unfortunately, he's in Hawaii with his son, or else they would have been here. Thank you guys so much.
You guys want a big group photo? Parents, come on upstairs, come on. Come on in here, Josh. You want to stand by the mayor?
This is from Ross Gramkowski, signed up for me today at the PX on forward chicken, and it says Avengers, and it's signed by Ross Gramkowski. That's ridiculous.
And our next presentation will be by Dave Phillips.
Just to introduce this, mayor, members of council, as for the new people, state law enacted a few years back requires the auditors to give a presentation to the city council at the normal meeting in regards to what they, how they've done their audit, any findings they may have, and just kind of any general thing. Following that, I'll give the presentation we've given before as well in regards to certifications of training money is not spent against a couple new Arizona revised statutes. It also went to place at that same time. The auditors, auditors out of Phoenix, so they are trying to teleconference it in. Get her on the phone.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Hi, how are you? All right, so my, can you guys, can you see my screen? Is it present? The presentation?
Yes, I've got the presentation up. There we go. Now you're on.
Okay. All right. My name's Kaylee Lewis. I'm with Baker Tilly, and we performed your fiscal year '24 audit this year. And I will get in. We'll start. Uh-oh. I'm used.
Kaylee, I do have the one from the email up. If you want to talk, I can manually move it forward for you.
Was it the email I just sent a few minutes ago?
No, this is the one that Devon sent yesterday.
Yeah, there's, I made a couple changes, but I don't know why this is not. I'll try one more time. Oh, it's, I don't have access to share. That's part of the problem.
There we go.
Okay, much better. Okay. All right, sorry about that. All right, so the audit result summary. So, we have completed the audit of the financial statements for the city as of June 30, 2024, with our report dated June 2, 2025. We issued three different reports, really four. We don't have one of them listed here, but the financial statement independent auditor's report, and we gave an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. We also issued a Yellow Book auditing standards compliance report, which is also known as your Yellow Book report, and that is required by state statute as well as when you have a single audit. And we had no instances of noncompliance or other matters that came to our attention during the audit, and we identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We also issued a federal grants audit, single audit report over the major programs, which included community development block grant and the federal transit formula grants, and we had no findings surrounding those major programs. We also prepared a reporting and insights letter that was addressed to governance, which is also dated June 2, and this is just supplementing that report. Our responsibilities as your independent auditor include planning and performing the audit to obtain reasonable assurance, but not an absolute level of assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. We assess the risk of material misstatement of the basic financial statements, whether due to fraud or error, which also includes an assessment of the city's internal controls over financial reporting. And from those assessments, we, we create our procedures to, and related to all of those risks. We evaluate the appropriateness of the accounting policies used in the reasonableness of estimates performed by management. We form and express an opinion based on our audit about whether or not the financial statements prepared by management and oversight of those charged with governance are free from material misstatement. They presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. We perform tests related to compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grants as required by government auditing standards, which is also due to your Yellow Book report. We consider the internal control over compliance with requirements that could have a direct and material effect on major federal programs and design test both controls and compliance over those major federal programs. We form and express an opinion based on our audit in accordance with the uniform guidance about the entity's compliance with requirements as described in that, in the OMB's compliance supplement for federal programs. Our audit does not relieve those charged with governance of their responsibilities. Additional communications that were required to report is, includes over internal control measures. We, we will test various controls throughout the audit, and we had no reportable findings with those controls. All of the qualitative aspects of the city's accounting practices, including policies and accounting estimates and financial statement disclosures, can be found in note one of the act for. We reviewed all material significant or unusual transactions and had no reportable issues there. We had no significant difficulties. We had no significant difficulties to report during the audit, no disagreements with management and circumstances that affect the form and content of the auditor's report or key audit matters. We had nothing to disclose. There, we're not aware of any audit consultations outside of our engagement team, and we had no significant misstatements to report, and no other findings. Again, just to reiterate, management's consult consultation with other accountants, we are not aware of any consultations with other accountants regarding the audit or accounting matters. We did not identify any noncompliance with laws or regulations. We did not identify any fraud that came to our attention, and we do not believe there are any such matters or conditions that have come to our attention during the engagement that the city has a going concern, which would mean that you would not be in operation from 12 months from the date of our report, which is June 2. And we did not have any findings with related parties. Our nonattest services that we performed on behalf of the City of Sierra Vista was we compiled your financial statements. We performed any adjusting journal entries that affected the financial statements. And we also prepared the audittee section of the data collection form that is uploaded to OMB. In addition, since we, we prepared your financial statements, we assisted with the Gatsby 34 conversion entries. Some high-level summaries from the single audit and the ELR, or the State Expenditure Limitation Report. The city expended $2.2,194,288 of federal funds during fiscal year 24, which were included on your SIPA, in your single audit report, and your major programs that we tested from your SIPA included the Community Development Block Grant and the Federal Transit Formula Grant. The city received an unmodified opinion for the major programs that we tested. Additionally, the Expenditure Limitation Examination Report, also known as the ELR, the city was $1.3 million, almost $1.4 million under that expenditure limitation, and here's a small summary of that, which you can see that the city's expenditure subject to the limitation was $66,689,369. And the Economic Estimate Commission limitation for the city is $68 million, so that brought you to one point, almost 1.4 below that. Some other key financial highlights from the MDNA, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis, are the general fund, the fund balance increased by $758,000, mainly as a result of your tax revenue and intergovernmental revenue and charges for services. So you had small increases in all of that that brought you up to a $758,000 increase in your fund balance. Your enterprise funds, your sewer fund, your operating expenses, expenses exceeded operating revenue by $912,000, which is an operating loss, and which also contributed to an overall decrease in your net position of $654,000. The refuse fund also had an operating loss of $158,000 and had a decrease in net position of $163,000. Any questions? I know that's a lot to go over quickly.
Just really quickly, you're still on the phone, Kaylee. For those who don't know, we did change audit firms this year. In prior years, since I actually started here, Heinfeld and Meach has been our auditor. Reports have said that last year alone, there was a shortage of 350,000 accounting graduates nationwide. So Heinfeld and Meach approached me late after they finished their audit last year and said, due to their staffing problems and staffing shortages, as shown by all the shortages in nationwide, they were unable to do our audit this year. I went through, looked at the various options we had in the state, and Baker Tilly came up as one that, A, had a cooperative agreement that we could piggyback on, B, has done many of the other cities our size in the state, and they're a nationwide firm, so if they had any issues with their offices here, they can pull people from other offices. They did an excellent job of getting on the ball, getting in here, and getting their crews in to take a look. Kaylee and her crew have been excellent to work with, and I'm glad we've got her last year. I hope we continue to get her for a couple more years. And I look forward to continuing the relationship with them, because working with them, they look at different things than other auditors, and it's been great to work with them. Thank you to you and your crew, Kaylee.
Thank you, David. Same to you, and thank you for the kind words.
And then we'll give the other phone certification. So, thank you. And we'll talk to you later about the timing for the next one.
Okay.
At the same time that that legislation was passed, that the auditor had to give a formal report, because apparently a city had not been, their council had said that they did not know about the audit, even though we do the audit and we put the information out there. The act for is on the city's website. The Expenditure Limitation Report that she mentioned was just finalized today, so that will get put on the website and sent to the Auditor's General's office tomorrow. As part of it, I'm sorry, Arizona Revised Statute 9-41 and 41-1494. Within 90 days after completing the audit, we are to certify that the money has not been spent, any travel and training funds have not been spent on any forms that have established any blame to any ethnicity, race, creed, religion, color of city funds. So you can't, we're not to send people to say that this subgroup is responsible for all the problems in the world. Obviously, we have not done that. We do not do that. Any sort of training or any sort of personnel issues would go through HR, and that is not what happens. And our department heads are very frugal with their money, and we certainly have more important things to spend the city funds on. So this simple thing is to certify that we have not spent any money that would qualify as any of these illegal activities. There is no method to say how we're supposed to certify this, so I just give this presentation every year to say we have not spent any city funds in any of these illegal activities. If you have any answer, any questions you may have. Questions from the guys? No, sir. No questions. Thank you for the presentations, and now we turn it over to City Manager, for the City Manager report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor McCaw, members of the council. Reminder that city offices will be closed next Friday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day, which will change our refuse schedule a little bit. Monday pickups, the second one will be on Wednesday, and then the Tuesday pickup, the second pickup will be on Thursday then for those customers. Your next regular work session is scheduled for Tuesday, the 8th of July, 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And then, of course, your next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, the 10th of July, 5:00 p.m., also here in the council chambers. A few projects tonight, the Shared Use Path, State Route 92 from Avenue de Cochise to Foothills Drive, which is funded by the Federal Transit Administration, has been awarded to KNG, and the kickoff for that project will start July 10. The Len Roberts Park Pathway Repairs and Replacement also was awarded to KNG, and that work should be completed by Monday. The Garden Avenue Streetscape Project is going on, and that will be completed still in the December timeframe. The Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway Reconstruction from Avenue de Cochise to State Route 90 is also expected to be wrapped up by Monday as well. And then, I'm pleased to report that the city has received a check in the amount of $1,363,771.50 in the form of a rebate from the U.S. Internal Revenue Service for the four solar projects constructed as part of our last Schneider project. The locations for those were City Hall, the Sea Red Vance Police Department, City Library, and the Cove. And as we discussed Tuesday, that money was placed in the budget in the Capital Improvements Fund, where we are looking to do another energy savings project at the golf course. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor McCaw.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments for City Manager? We're proceed to item number two, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda consistent of the minutes of the work session on June 10, 2025, the special city council meeting of June 10, 2025, the regular council meeting of June 12, 2025, the special city council meeting of June 16, 2025, and the special city council meeting of June 16, 2025 be approved.
Second.
Probably move to the second. Are there any comments?
Lots of meetings.
John, Maria.
Thank you, Maria. And Joe.
And Joe. I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? opposed, ear 969 is passed. Our public hearing items, item number three, Councilwoman Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move Resolution 2025-046, Program Year 2025, Community Development Grant, CDVG, Program Annual Action Plan be approved.
Second.
Probably move to the second staff report, Mr. McLaughlin. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to present the city's annual action plan for the upcoming program year. It's a product of several public meetings and carries out the goals and priorities established in the five-year consolidated plan that you all approved last year. It's also formatted to respond to HUD's requirements, essentially linking the projects to national objectives and demonstrating compliance with the city's citizen participation plan. 100% of next year's funding will be used to carry out the projects and activities that will benefit low-to-moderate income neighborhoods and residents of the city. The program administrative costs are absorbed into our departmental operating budget. As you can see on this chart, we have five projects for your consideration that were vetted by the city's Neighborhood Commission, and were presented to you back in March and put out for a 30-day public comment period. Most of the funding will be applied towards the council's goal of improving public facilities and infrastructure within the city's target areas. Altogether, they total $246,367. First project on the list is the initial phase of the Henry Jones Legacy Park, which will concentrate on creating a pocket park facing Frye Boulevard and making drainage improvements. It's been five years since the purchase by the city, and over the next year, we'll be developing engineered construction plans for the property to implement the conceptual plan that was previously approved by council. We'll also look to leverage the Community Development Block Grant funding with outside grants to increase the scope of the project. The right-of-way portion along Fab Avenue will be done through an FTA grant this year that involves installing curb, gutter, sidewalk, angled parking, and landscape islands along Fab Avenue. As was mentioned at the work session, we will be coming back later this summer with a substantial amendment to our previous annual action plans to reallocate the unused Community Development Block Grant funds from other activities towards this project. We expect that amount to be around $190,000. Second project involves installing pedestrian connections to the tiny homes being proposed by Catholic Community Services on the southwest corner of Taylor Drive in Cayton. The four homes will provide long-term housing for survivors of domestic violence and individuals recovering from trauma. That project is currently wrapping up the permitting process. Third project involves rehabilitating the parking lot at St. Vincent de Paul Thrift Store, which is in a severely deteriorated state, creating safety hazards for their customers. The profits from the thrift store are used to fund the community programs that they offer to help persons in need in our community. There are two public service applications being funded this year, Better Bucks of Sierra Vista and United Way. Better Bucks is seeking funding for two integrated initiatives that serve persons experiencing homelessness. Better Bucks, or Better Work is a day labor program. We employ the homeless to pick up trash and debris from public lands throughout the community. Just this morning, they were out clearing debris behind the Lehman Academy on the state land at Lunsner and Wilcox. Community Connect is the monthly pop-up resource and referral center at the Salvation Army that connects individuals in crisis to housing, employment, and supportive services. That's been going on for about two years now and continues to gain momentum. The United Way is another program you're familiar with to provide crisis funding for short-term utility and rental assistance, as well as basic needs supporting food distribution that generally occurs around the holidays between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and employment assistance such as resume writing and job fairs. I saw that Dr. Reed is in the audience, as well as Wendy Grindi from the Neighborhoods Commission. Pauline Fredericks couldn't make it. She was a little delayed leaving Tucson today, and, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on this year's annual action plan.
Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work, as always, because it's a lot of work for you. I did notice that there was no admin, administration fee line this time around, and I hadn't realized it was coming out of operations through community development. So does that mean there's more money going to the program? Well, thank you. I don't know whose idea that was, was it? How we?
It's a very low percentage. We're entitled to spend up to 20%. Historically, it's been like 2% to 3%, so we try to deploy, yeah, those funds to meet the needs of the community.
I know it's not a lot to the city, but it's a lot to these, you know, these organizations. So thank you for whoever remath that. And I, I noticed, I don't know how long Community Connect's been meeting at Salvation Army, but I'm assuming that's helped with attendance and getting the word out.
They were previously at Ethel Burger. Started back in, I believe, February of 2023. And up until six months ago, or maybe it was eight months, as time is flying by, they made the switch to Salvation Army. And credit goes to Corporal Scott Borgstadt for leading that initiative, and Brad Rowland from Good Neighbor Alliance, and all the nonprofits that participate in that monthly resource fair.
Well, I'm glad it's going well, and yeah, thank you again.
As I mentioned at the work session, it's really nice to see that the project name that had that placeholder of Fab Avenue to now say the Henry Jones Legacy Park. It's nice to, it's nice to see that in there, so we finally have that there. And I really, I really love seeing all these different projects and how it spans a wide range of things in there, and how it'll have a positive ripple in a lot of lives with that span of projects, so that's really great to see, and thanks for all the hard work that goes into this, for a lot of it that leads up to this process, so I appreciate that.
The program's making a difference, and we try to stretch every dollar.
I just want to thank the commissions that put their work into this as well, that looked at this stuff before and get like the vibe and the information from the community out there, the needs. There's, obviously, there's, you know, obviously, I wish there was much more money we could put at it. It's hard to divide any kind of money up to anybody, and it's, I wish there was more, and I do like the fact that if there was, something did cost less, like the fire hydrants, and we're able to use that somewhere else. So I'm all for that. Hopefully, we'll have some underbid, bid a project maybe, but if not, thank you for them as well. Like I said, just want to thank them for doing their work on their end, because it is, it's not easy, and nobody, you know, it's, it's not an easy job to do to divvy out the money or recommend how it goes, so thank you to them. They did that work.
The others?
We're still keeping an eye out for FTA grants for Ford Avenue. We're still keeping an eye out for FTA grants for Ford Avenue, sidewalk project. Len Roberts was done, as was just mentioned. So we are trying to meet the community priorities through this program and using CBG and other sources of funding.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you for your hard work. This is a public hearing. Yes, sir. All right. I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. And we go to item number four, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2025 dash zero forty-seven, tentative budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 be approved.
Second.
Then properly move the second staff report, Ms. Jen. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. We're almost there. So the city's fiscal year 2025, 2026 tentative budget is proposed in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Through council adoption of this resolution tonight, in pursuant to state statutes, the budget will be capped. This means that the final budget may be less than or equal to the tentative budget amount, but may not exceed it. The state forms a memo with the summary of the changes from the tentative budget book have been included with the resolution, and to date, we have not received any public comments. So again, a reminder, approval of the final budget is scheduled for July 24th, and the resolution to adopt property tax levy is scheduled for August 14th.
Excellent. Any other questions? I know it's been a long road.
You've done a great job.
Done a great job, Jen.
Actually, everyone has, because I know you work with all the departments.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Nice book.
Thank you. That's it, is.
Legit book.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
None, no other comments? Call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. Go to item number five, Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2025 dash zero four eight, authorization to proceed with an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Sierra Vista, the Cochise County Sheriff's Office, and the Cochise County Community College District be approved.
Second.
Then probably move the second staff report, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. With this resolution, I'm requesting approval of our, renewing our annual IGA with Cochise College and Cochise County for a regional police academy. The details of this IGA explain that we will get reimbursement for our recruit training officer that we assign the academy. We'll get reimbursement for his overtime in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars per each 20-week session, and there's two 20-week sessions in the year. This IGA also spells out the cost for using Beugan Hall, which is their onsite living facility. We do not use that facility. It's reserved for the out-of-area agencies who have recruits that are coming from Safford or the San Carlos Reservation. So we don't have any intentions of using the residence hall for service to recruits this next coming class. And also, the start date for the two academy classes are also in this IGA. The next academy class is July 22nd, and we plan on sending three recruits in that class. That'll take any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments?
Okay, I will since. I just, when I first was elected, over six years ago, we was, that was like maybe the last class that came out of Tucson, and you were just starting to meet with Mark Danals, our sheriff, and other departments in Cochise County. And I just love that you all came together with this local solution, more affordable solution, and they do a better job. We're getting so many great recruits out of there with every class, and I'm just really grateful for all the work that's going into it.
I agree a hundred percent. Thank you.
Excellent. So I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. Thank you, Chief. Go to item number six, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution 2025 dash zero four nine, appointing Brian H. Myers to the city council. Said term to expire December 31st, 2026 be approved.
Second.
Then properly move the second. Good afternoon, sir. Good to see you.
Hilarious. I'm like, did he not show up?
So I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Welcome, sir. It is passed. And his first day on the dais will be in July, in July.
July 8th.
July 8th?
Work session July 8th, meeting, regular meeting July 10th.
Thank you, sir. All right. Go to item number seven, Councilwoman Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move Resolution 2025 dash zero five zero, third amendment to the southeastern Arizona Communications Intergovernmental Agreement be approved.
Second.
Then properly move the second staff report, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor McCaw, members of council. Good afternoon. So this third amended IGA accomplishes several goals for you. It shifts fiscal agency back to Cochise County, and it also incorporates the acknowledgement that some employees elected to remain city employees instead of transitioning to county employment. The details of handling employees between the two different employers are actually handled through the CCOM bylaws, and so the loaned employee agreements that council approved back in February of this year will be rescinded through the resolution as well. And then finally, this IGA also incorporates the amendments to the second amended IGA for clarity purposes. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that some of the employees had the choice to stay with the city if they wanted to. That was nice to have that. And I really liked to see that the CCOM JKA Board, they voted unanimously in favor. Everybody did. And then the Cochise County Board of Supervisors as well, so I think that was great to see. So always a good sign.
Excellent. Any more comments? I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. Go to item number eight, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2025 dash zero five one, third amendment to the Sierra Vista Metropolitan Organization Intergovernmental Agreement be approved.
Second.
Then properly move the second staff report, ma'am.
Thank you again, Mayor McCaw, members of council. We regularly update our intergovernmental agreements with our various partner agencies. This will be the third amended IGA to our agreement with the Sierra Vista Metropolitan Planning Organization as well. Over the past several months, the NPO decided to move out of the Pedro Castro Center, which is our Public Works Administration building, and into new office space. Our previous agreement was a hosting agreement and provided services as the agencies host. So as they moved out, we needed to renegotiate that agreement into an agreement to continue providing fiscal agency services and related support services to them as a partner agency. And so this agreement covers our services as their fiscal agent and includes HR, finance and accounting, procurement, IT, and some legal services to them as our partner agency. The NPO board actually considered this yesterday and also approved it unanimously, and NPO Director Karen is here as well.
Excellent. Any questions, comments?
Would it be all right to invite Karen up to, if she wants? Do you want to, did you want to say anything? Because usually she wants to say something.
Of course, I always want to say something. I just want to convey my appreciation to the city for their longstanding support at the Sierra Vista NPO, which is your regional agency. And we partner with you on planning activities, which then helped leverage some of your transportation infrastructure, and we've been really pleased to see some of those activities go forward. So we are very appreciative of the departments that provide us with that assistance, and there was a great deal of work, as Victoria said, to rekind of configure this as we moved into our own space. So we're looking forward to that continued partnership with all of you and doing some great things out on the roadway with y'all. So always call me if you've got any questions on just transportation, nothing else. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for smoothing out our roads.
Yeah. And I just, especially to Victoria, but I also want to thank David Felix from Finance. He was in, some of these meetings were long. Helen from Procurement, Kenny Downing from HR, and Abe from IT. I feel like I missed Justin from the NPO. There was a lot of people that had to come together to get all this drafted, so I just wanted to thank them again.
Excellent. Any more comments from the dais? All right. I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? It is passed. Go to item number nine, Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2025 dash zero five two, amendment to the city attorney contract be approved.
Second.
Then probably move the second staff report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor McCaw, members of the council. Approval of this resolution amends the contract that you have with the city attorney to allow for adjustments to his base salary to correlate with the annual salary increases received by the other city employees through your budget process. This year, 2%. And that's basically all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Comments from the, yes, ma'am?
Thank you for, I feel like you're busier now with city stuff than you have been in the past, so I just want to thank you for all your hard work and being a consistent. You've been there, you've kept us, you know, out of case law, so thanks. And yeah, it's well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Members of council, thank you.
Thank you. We know a lot about open meeting law. I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. Go to item number 10, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move the Resolution 2025 dash zero five three, an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for funding through an allocation of highway infrastructure programs, congressionally-directed spending projects for Phase One of the Buffalo Soldier Trail Pavement Reconstruction Project be approved.
Second.
Then probably move the second staff report, Ms. Priscilla.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item has been several years in the making, and we are excited to present it to you today. This agreement is with the Arizona Department of Transportation to fund the first phase of pavement reconstruction to Buffalo Soldier Trail in the amount of four million, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars for design and construction. The city match is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. The project limits are Seventh Street North, 3,000 feet to Woodcutters Wash. Per the request of Councilman Rodriguez at the work session, a map was added to the resolution to help clarify the project limits. The funding for this project was made possible by Arizona Congressman Juan Siscomani, who is able to include the project in congressionally-directed spending. As the funds are federal, they are being passed through the state of Arizona but are earmarked for use on the Buffalo Soldier Trail project. Design and construction will be administered by the state in accordance with federal regulations. As noted during the work session on Tuesday, this resolution is hopefully just the first with more to come. The city has submitted a request for appropriations to complete future phases, and both Senator Kelly and Congressman Siscomani have expressed a high level of interest in the city's current application. We remain optimistic for future funding and thank our delegation for their continued support. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments for?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for adding the map, so everybody knows where Woodcutters Wash is and to clarify any of that, those questions. So thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? I'll call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. Thank you, ma'am. Go to item number 11, Councilwoman Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move Resolution 2025 dash zero five four, establishment of a memorandum of understanding with the University of Arizona Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Education for the youth council be approved.
Second.
Probably move the second staff report, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On February 27th, the mayor and council dissolved the youth commission in order to pursue a less formal structure, which would enhance its efficiency and effectiveness through a partnership with the University of Arizona Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, U of A SNAP Ed for a youth council. The approval of this resolution will allow us to formalize our partnership by executing a memorandum of understanding. The MOU will permit the city to support the youth council's efforts by providing support and resources to include, but not limited to, marketing, transportation to and from the Arizona League of Cities Annual Conference, transportation to and from the airport for the National League of Cities Conference, budget up to $2,000 per year to pay for up to five participants to attend both the Arizona and the National League of Cities Conferences, allow for the use of city vehicles, and permit the use of city facilities at no cost for youth council activities to include fundraising efforts. The U of A SNAP Ed will provide a quarterly report to the mayor and council regarding the youth council's activities, provide in-person briefings to the mayor and council, and provide guidance to the participants while overseeing all activities and programs. Your support on this will allow me to work with them enthusiastically to support these endeavors. I know how much Councilmember Rodriguez has been working on this, and I appreciate your support in that, and looking forward to supporting this if passed tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? Yes, go.
Thank you. As you know, the former commission now youth council is obviously very near and dear to me and all the youth in our community, so I just, any avenue we have to help promote our youth and their ideas, and then take them places where they can meet other youth or share and show, you know, showcase our city when they go to Phoenix or when they go to DC. It's priceless, those, you know, those trips that they go on, it's not just a fun time. They do a lot of work. They sit through a lot of sessions, a lot of walking as well. So overall, great. So I'm very appreciative for this agreement to be signed, and the city providing the support and some money there as well as a partner, because they do all their other fundraising, and we have other partnerships, and which I want to thank them as well, the people from U of A that have stepped up for the SNAP program, which I hope remains in place. That's very important for this program, obviously, as a partner. So thank you to them, and thank you for the staff here in Parks. And like I mentioned in the work session, even on Sundays, whenever we need space or someone to meet, you guys have always been very flexible with our youth, because it's sometimes like herding cats with that age. But I'm looking forward to that, and I really want to see them excel and then, you know, maybe move on to somewhere where there's a young adult program in our city too for, as they age out of the youth council or youth commission. So that's, but that's down the line, and looking forward to that. So thank you very much.
Call for the vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none is passed. Tonight, we have two calls to the publics. We call Ms. Karen Flynn. Good afternoon. You have five minutes. See green light here. When you're red, your time has expired.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Karen Flynn, and I'm here regarding the golf course driving range. First, about the low use of the range at night. Briefly, over two weeks in mid-April, there was an average of nine patrons hitting balls at 8:00 p.m. Over the next four weeks, there was an average of four. In the most recent four weeks, the average was 10 patrons using an average of seven of the 26 bays at 8:00 o'clock. If the range closed at 8:00 p.m., these few golfers would simply time shift to one of the other 13 or 14 hours a day that the range is open. I again ask that you revise city ordinances so that these lights are off at 8:00, which lessens the nighttime hours that the neighborhood is subject to light intrusion from the range. It was just about a year ago, I think, that Castle and Cook tossed their keys on the course and ran off. Thankfully, you decided to keep it in operation, and you determined that it would be a park. The city has decades of experience in operating parks, but this brings me to my second point. This is a golf course, not really a park. And how much experience does a city have in operating a golf course? So the city hired a contractor, Paradigm, to operate it. But let me take a step back. The first time I spoke at the call to the public, I mentioned that I'm a retired Army civilian contracting officer. From a contracting officer's perspective, the city now has a big issue. In government contracting, there are three parties, the procurement office, the contractor, and the government expert. It's the government expert that provides technical direction to the contractor, monitors its performance, and provides fiscal oversight. What the city has is a contractor to run the course, but no government expert yet. You have the perfect setup for the city to take advice from the contractor without a way to evaluate if it's good for the contractor or if good for the city in the long term. Millions of dollars of costs relating to the course are on the way, including a new well and an energy savings project. Add to that, Paradigm says their utility costs, mostly related to running a well that waters the grass, are higher than expected. Keep in mind that the type of grass on the course, per the Golf Center's website, is bent grass. A quick search tells you that bent grass uses the most water of all turf grasses. If the city is looking for ways to reduce water use and associated utility costs, an independent golf course operations expert could provide advice to you regarding best practices for energy and water savings, and a menu of options for long-term savings, including perhaps replacing thirsty bent grass with a grass that requires less water, which would in turn reduce utility costs. To date, it appears that Paradigm is providing technical direction to the city instead of vice versa, and money has been wasted. vice versa, and money has been wasted. For example, per paragraph 2D of the contract, the city built a driving range structure that included forward-facing floodlights that caused extreme light intrusion into the neighborhood. Due to this intrusion, the floodlights were removed. The structure's design wasn't based on the city's expertise, it was based on the same one that's at the Mesa Course that Paradigm manages. But here in Sierra Vista, it's been squeezed into a much smaller area and is surrounded by a very different neighborhood. Next, $66,000 of LED ground lights were installed. Paradigm said they were needed to light up the red, white, and blue target lights that are already there. These new floodlights were turned on in late May, and the result? Neighborhood outcry, again due to severe light intrusion, based on how the lights were placed around the range this time. The lights were turned off after two days. So far, based on Paradigm's technical advice, the city has spent perhaps $100,000 for lights that Paradigm wanted but aren't required to operate the range. Unbiased expertise might have prevented that. Lastly, there's blue construction netting set up in an attempt to keep range balls from being hit onto the first hole, but there are still range balls all over that hole. An independent expert might have advised the city that a properly-placed, smaller structure would prevent this and minimize the risk of injury from range balls to people elsewhere on the course, which would, of course, reduce potential liability issues for the city. To sum up, I'm here to ask you that to reduce light intrusion in the surrounding neighborhood, you revise city ordinances so that all the range lights are off at 8:00 p.m., and to suggest that the city needs unbiased golf course management expertise as it moves forward with projects costing millions of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next call to public is Mr. Dimitri Siantin of the IDEA.
Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, thank you so much for all that you do. Just looking at this agenda, I mean, wow, really impressed with everything that's going on and throughout our community. Kind of is a little uncomfortable at times, right? I felt like Tucson the last couple of weeks, just with all of the roadwork being done and everything else like that, but always good to see the progress. So today, I'm here for two different issues, or call to the publics, if you will. Number one, I have the privilege of serving on the governing board for Arizona Town Halls, and I'm excited to announce that we have selected what would be an upcoming topic of civic engagement in education. This year's topic is workforce development, next year's is housing, and then we will be going into civic engagement in education, and we will be hosting town halls throughout the state. And of course, we'll be having ours here, so I invite all of you out to those. And if you need any more information, you could reach out to our CEO, Tara Jackson. And then, of course, the background reports from all of our Arizona Town Hall studies are available online. What's really great is they are digitizing some of the historical ones that have been leveraged for policy on the state level. And I'm excited to be able to give that to all of the current council members and incoming council members, so you have more perspective on certain issues and how they're being addressed throughout the state. Second, I'm here as a parent and as someone who's grown up in Sierra Vista my whole life. So please forgive me if I've missed it, but coming off of Las Briesas Way, Tacoma, Las Briesas Way, or the other Tacoma, there's not a pedestrian crosswalk. And as my son is starting football this year, you know, we like to walk and/or run to football practice, and we find ourselves dashing across the street during peak times. And so just wanted to bring that aware. And once again, please forgive me if there are some pedestrian walks and I haven't seen any. But as we work to be more inclusive and make sure that everyone has safe kind of access, right now, you'd have to go all the way down to Martin Luther King Parkway or all the way down at the edge of the street to cross the road safely. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, and please forgive me if I've missed it, I just have not seen them. And, you know, as you guys are going into your new strategic plans, please just look for ways that you can incorporate some type of pedestrian crosswalk or something to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And no more call to the public. We close that, and we have comments and requests of the council. We start off with Councilwoman Jackson.
Brian, welcome to the team, and congratulations to you and your family. So we look forward to working with you. As for our community in our residence, you guys know we're preparing for a major holiday. Please be careful out there. If you're, if you are going to drink, make sure you have someone driving with you that did not drink. Me personally, I love H2O, so if you want to call me, just give me a call. Just please do not drive and drink, okay? Also, too, for Ms. Lauren and her team, thank you guys so much for the program with U of A, because that's the best university in Arizona. So thank you, guys, for merging with them and doing anything with U of A. And like Mark, Mark, no, don't say no boo. We are, we are number one all the way. But we do a lot with our youth, and we do have an awesome community. So thank you, guys, so much for all your hard work. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you for the call to the public today. It's always good to hear from our public, all the topics there in our community. So thank you for them for being here. Yesterday was the 75th anniversary of the Korean War, so I want to thank those Korean vets. There may be just a few left, because, you know, they're getting up to an age, but for all the service and that they provided to us and to the country of South Korea, my hats off to them, because that was the, what's known as the forgotten war. Today is also 626 Day. If you're a Disney fan, Stitch, you know, is also big for me and my daughter, and it was her birthday yesterday, so I want to say happy birthday to my daughter. She's my marine in Hawaii, she turned 24, so big shout out to my daughter. And then, as you mentioned, the Fourth of July events coming up. We have a lot of stuff going on. Typical Fourth of July in Sierra Vista, scheduled to rain, right? So hopefully, we'll get some, some good spaces in the clouds where we can have our events, but just plan accordingly. Bring an umbrella. If everybody brings an umbrella, maybe it won't rain on our parade, you know? We'll try it. Try that method out. The Sierra Vista Community Band is going to be tonight at the park, 6:30 p.m. at Veterans Memorial Park. So go get a chair and go check them out. Also tonight, Stargaze United, Onyx Grounds, Urbano Coffee, just out to us, from 8:00 to 10:00. The Astronomy Club's going to be out there. And if you've never been to one of their events, they have some amazing telescopes that are privately owned, and the people are very nice, they'll let you look at their telescopes, and you can see out and far out into the galaxy. So I recommend that if you're not doing anything this evening. And then this Saturday, the Stand Up for Freedom Street Fair happens every year behind docks, behind the, behind being docks, Punches, and the Warrior Healing Center, that little alley back there. The official time's from 4:00 to 9:00. There is stuff going on all day. Of note this time, the Dunking Booth.
Yes, sir.
Right? I'll be there at 5:00. The mayor will be there at 5:30, and Chief Heiser will be there at 6:00. So we're going to see which one of us raises the most money for veterans, so come out at 5:00 and...
Oh, great, I get the last.
And hopefully, the water's a little clearer than it was for you last time, chief, because that was, that's some murky water at the golf course, so I hope you're, I hope it's clear water. And that's all I have.
Heard it was green.
I think there was fish in there.
It was nasty. Still okay.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to start off, as I also mentioned, Fourth of July is coming up. I just wanted to start off with a quick reminder for all the pet owners out there that as the Fourth of July approaches, if your pets, if you know that they struggle with fireworks, now's the time to contact your vet about anything that you maybe need to make arrangements to keep them calm, if you need to get any medication or anything. Contact them sooner rather than later, just to make sure that they're, they enjoy their night and they're not having a hard time. A little planning can go, come a long way when it comes to helping our animals, helping our pets feel safe, because they're part of our family, too. We want them to have a good night. Sierra Vista, we put on an incredible firework show every single year. It's something that so many people work so hard to organize for the whole community to enjoy. So with that in mind, there's not really any need for people to be setting off fireworks in their own neighborhood and getting wild like that. So just kind of come together and enjoy all of the hard work that people do and keep our neighborhood safe, because it can get dangerous with fireworks, people. We don't need to be having our first responders out there on calls for people being a little crazy with fireworks. And beyond our pets, we also have a large number of veterans in our community, so fireworks can be especially triggering for some of them, which is another reason not to be getting wild in your neighborhood, setting off fireworks, because we don't want to take anything away from anybody's holiday. It makes it better for everybody. I wanted to thank everybody who's been collecting aluminum cans and can tabs for the Nancy J. Brewer Animal Shelter. If you didn't know, they accept soda cans, beer, seltzer, energy drink cans, any type of aluminum cans. They prefer that you separate the cans and the tabs if possible. That makes things better for them. You can drop them off in bags, please, outside the shelter. There's bins there, and then they transport them to Tucson for them to be recycled. And then that money that they get from that really, really helps the shelter and keeps it going. So many people are chipping in and taking cans. We want your cans, everybody. We love your cans. There are so many people are doing that, that now the shelter is asking for people to help to put those cans into larger bags that they take, they transport to Tucson. So if you have any time, or if you have anybody that's looking for volunteer time, or if you have time with your family, I know summer time's here, we have, maybe you have kids that, I don't know. But reach out to them, and they can get you started with helping them out there. The animals at the shelter will definitely appreciate that. And extra points, extra bonus points, if you make it a habit and do it regularly, because it really makes a big difference. Another thing that I wanted to mention is that Razzle Cast, I don't know if you guys have heard of it or not, it's a coffee shop on Frye Boulevard. It's right across from Summit Fitness. It's closing its doors. I remember when I went to their ribbon-cutting ceremony, they were super excited to be open and serving the community. There wasn't a lot of people there, but the baker there was, is really incredible. She made a lot of really unique baked goods and really creative treats in there. So I always liked to try different things whenever I had a chance to stop by. So I was really sad to see that they were closing their doors, because I know that Kula FM did a feature on them and everything, and, you know, everybody, a lot of people turned to them to kind of see what's going on in the community. So it is really tough to see small local businesses that are closing. So I really want to encourage everybody to find, be conscious, just make it, make an effort to find a local spot that you haven't tried. I know sometimes when we, when we go about our routines, there's, we kind of just, everything blends together, but just kind of make an effort to go out there and find a small business that you haven't went to before. Because the small businesses in our town is what gives Sierra Vista its personality, and it's what makes our city special, is supporting our small businesses. And then I want, also wanted to mention that it's still Pride Month, and I wanted to make, to recognize the importance of visibility and support, and to share that youth in the queer community are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Not twice as likely, four times as likely to commit suicide. And that's not just, it's not just a statistic that I'm sharing. It's a reminder that love, inclusion, and kindness, it really matters, and it makes a big difference. And I think that's something that we should all kind of keep in mind. There was a local business that hosted a Pride event this month, and it was unfortunately met with a lot of hate on social media. That really upset me, which, it was very disheartening, because, I mean, sometimes you go on social media and people feel like it's easier to spread hate. But seeing that really, it really hurt my heart, because isn't, isn't love when it's supposed to be one of the greatest commandments, and what brings us together is love? So seeing that really hurt me, but I did love to see the support that a lot of our community members gave to that organization. So, yeah, I just kind of wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, because our differences are what makes our life vibrant. Isn't variety supposed to be the spice of life, right? So for extra credit, if you wanted to support a small business, you can support a small queer business for extra credit as well. Because as Lady Gaga says, "You're on the right track, baby." I'm going to throw that out there. And moving on, I also wanted to give a big thank you to Jill and to everybody who has helped organize the application and the interview process for the vacant council seats. Between the outreach and preparing the pockets and coordinating the interviews, it's been a whole lot of work, getting everybody's schedules. It's, and I can't imagine, all the, all the work that's been put into it with her and her attention to detail and follow-through and keeping council grounded and organized. It's been, we all really appreciate that. She's really, she, she gives us, she gives us life on council. So, yeah, I just wanted to, in conclusion, I just wanted to say that moments like this are really a good reminder of how much we rely on people who show up prepared, respect the process, and treat others professionally, and especially those people that are working behind the scenes. That kind of presence, it speaks volumes, even when it doesn't shout out. And honestly, that's the kind of leadership our community deserves, and that's what makes Sierra Vista what it is. So I just wanted to say, be blessed and blessed be.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, free.
I keep following him. Okay. I never, I never got a chance to say, "I'm looking forward to working with you, Brian," because I think we were so excited to approve his appointment that we just jumped into the vote. So, but I want to, I also want to say, while we're all looking forward to working with you, and you're a great, you, you're a great candidate, and I'm excited to see you as a council member now, well, once you get sworn out after the meeting. I felt like we came to a point after the first round of interviews that we couldn't make a bad choice. We had excellent candidates that interviewed, and I really want to, I want to thank all them, and then the ones that applied the second round. Just so many great people to choose from. We're in a really fortunate spot in our community to have so many great applicants. We had our, well, this morning, we were at the change of command for the electronic proving ground. Colonel Barnhill retired, and we all love him. He's a character. And we're welcoming Colonel Taylor. And, and I normally don't mention, we go to lots of change of commands and retirement ceremonies, I normally just don't mention it, but this is EPG. It's extremely important. We know it's in a vulnerable place right now, and I just, it belongs nowhere else but Sierra Vista on Fort Huachuca, so I just wanted to say that. We also had, well, I had a council meeting greet today, but I, I know you couldn't be there. He got stuck with the governor, I guess that's a big deal. But it went well. It was at the farmer's market, and I did have a lot of questions about Route 90. Why, why did we stop doing the work? And something about the asphalt plant was down, and now it's back, and they're going to be finishing it within the next five days or so. So hang tight, it is going to get finished. And then they'll come back in about 30 days after that and put that thermo seal on there. And then, oh, I want to mention one more thing. Bear down.
Does the Gronk say?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Fear the fork. So I'll start off with saying thanks to Chief Heiser and Detective Sam Brady for the implementation and the planning of the joint agency active shooter training at the American Leadership Academy on yesterday. Absolutely phenomenal training. I do want to give a big shout out to Ms. Sharon Fassard for, I think she submit, to submit that video to be considered for roles in movies, because she is a definite actor. And she has a scream that just pierces you. So Ms. Sharon, yeah, you, you definitely can, you start with Mike Stone on a couple of his movies. Mike, you need to hire her. With that, I don't have nothing else, but we will say, fear the fork, because U of A is going down this year.
No way. We are just not, we are not.
That's it. We are dismissed.[1787.65]